Good evening, everyone. Excuse me for touching my mic. I call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. Today is September 27, 2021. Welcome. First on our agenda tonight is approval of the minutes of our regular planning commission meeting of August 23, 2021. Is there a motion and a second on approving our minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All in favor of approving our minutes say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The motion carries. So we are wearing our masks tonight if when people are speaking, if they care to take them off at the microphone, feel free. So people, it's up to you. I'm going to leave mine on. Also, we have four planning commissioners here, but we do have a quorum, four or more as a quorum, in case anyone was wondering. First on the agenda tonight, we have open forum, which is an opportunity every month for people from the public to speak to the planning commission on any item not on the agenda. You can call in, you can write in, you can come to the podium and the mic. It's kind of underutilized and we really welcome anyone watching to get brave and come in and share your ideas to the planning commission. You have up to three minutes. The number to call in live right now is 612-861-0651. And I'll repeat that. And that's the same number to call in live for the plan, the open house, I mean, the public hearing. So I'll repeat that number a couple of times, but it's our, can jot it down for future meetings, too. So Kelly, do we have any callers on the line for open forum?
Chair Quam, I do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the room that would like to share at the podium for open forum for things not on the agenda? If so, you just head right up. Okay. And did we have any calls or emails ahead of time for open forum, staff?
Chair Quam, we did not.
Okay, thank you. One more moment for open forum for people calling in. We have a somewhat busy agenda, so I'm going to move on to enclose the open forum and move on to approval of tonight's agenda. So we would have a motion and a second and discussion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Thank you. So it's moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion among the commissioners? No? All in favor of approving tonight's agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, so next we are other business. And we will consider a recommendation of approval of a resolution accepting the Portland Gateway Report and directing staff to consider its recommendations when evaluating proposals and policies in the study area. So staff, would you read your report?
Yes, thank you, Chair Quam. In 2019, the cities of Richfield and Bloomington were selected for a 2020 Council for the New Urbanism Legacy Project. Council for the New Urbanism is also known as CNU. Legacy projects offer municipalities, community-based nonprofits, neighborhood organizations, and others in the area of the CNU Annual Conference the opportunity to host a four-day neighborhood design workshop with leading national urban design firms. These are for projects related to the mission of CNU. The cities of Bloomington and Richfield combined application for the Portland Gateway area was selected, and the cities worked with TSW planners and architects, as well as Tool Design Group, to explore the revitalization of this area in the context of significant upcoming transportation changes. The Portland Gateway area is generally located along I-494 between Nicolet and 12th Avenues and 76th Street and American Boulevard. Although the pandemic caused the cancellation of the CNU Annual Conference and the four-day workshop, city staff and the design team worked to virtually engage the community and prepare a report that includes key observations and neighborhood input that we want to acknowledge and use to inform policy actions in this geographic area. The attached report provides the following. It includes a summary of existing conditions, area context, and existing, an evaluation of existing plans and policy documents. It identifies a walkability enhancement zone as an area that could be evaluated for broader connectivity opportunities, design standards, and policy recommendations. It includes valuable input from stakeholders, including area business owners, property owners, residents, and then also agencies, including MINDOT, Metro Transit, Hennepin County, and also local developers. Those, that input included existing places of value, important existing connections, things that were desired in the community, like goods and services, and connections to those things. It identified safety concerns, desired public realm improvements, so things like in the right-of-way, sidewalks, bike lanes. And also, we looked at the potential market for redevelopment. Recommendations also were included in the report for general design standards for the public realm, including local streetscapes, mid-block crossings, pedestrian and bike facilities, and bridges, and also public spaces. A matrix of action items to consider related to redevelopment alternatives, affordable housing, mobility, and also parks, open space in the public realm are included in the report. Staff is recommending that the city council accept the attached report and direct staff to further explore the potential adoption of specific policies and ideas discussed within. As MINDOT, just why we believe that's important. You know, this, this was a, not a typical planning study that's very in-depth, has consultants that are very familiar with the area, and goes on for a long-term numbers of months. This was intended to be a short-term injection of excitement. It was supposed to be part of this annual conference, really an exciting but quick opportunity. The guidelines and recommendations in this report have not been fully fleshed out, they're not ready for adoption. They need, they need some evaluation by our attorneys to see how they fit within the Minnesota regulatory framework, things like that. But with MINDOT moving forward with their I-494 project, we think there's a lot of valuable input from those stakeholders that we want to be able to take to them and show them in this report that we've recorded, that these are things that were important to our community, and these are things that you need to address as you go forward with this project. So that's why we're recommending that the council accept the report and direct us to use the information to move forward. And I'm happy to answer any questions about the report.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I, I read through this, and I really, I really appreciate the effort and what went on in it. But I have to say, as a resident who lives close to Penn Avenue, I'm pretty envious of not having something similar to this on, for Penn. And I realize the situation is totally different, the demographics, all the businesses and whatever. But it would be kind of nice because of, we could have some sort of a, an agreement or a, something similar to this for Penn, because Penn Avenue is, is really in dire need of, of upgrading. And we've been, I mean, I was on the council in 1992 when we were talking about this, so I know this has been a long-term thing. But I really do appreciate having a document like this. At least there is some things to shoot for and some things. So I think it's a really good document to have and just to kind of keep in the, in our back pocket so that we can know kind of where we're going in this area. Because I think this is going to, 494, they're not, is there going to be an exit on Portland? The new, in the 494 change?
Commissioner Rosenberg, yes. Portland Avenue will be a full interchange.
Okay, a full, all right.
And then Nicolet and 12th will no longer have access to or from the freeway.
Okay, okay. So that's gonna, I thought maybe there was be some impact from that, but yeah, I remember now Portland is going to be, have their own exit. But anyway, like I said, I do think this is a good document, and I, it, it made a lot of sense, so thank you.
Other questions? Commissioners Dursa?
Yeah, I agree. I really appreciate the time and energy that went into looking at this, at this area. I think Portland, a lot is going to change for that area with the closures of the other two exit ramps. And I think that I really like that the improved mobility access for all modes of transportation was in it. I really appreciated them emphasizing that. I think there's a lot of really great recommendations, and I'll be excited to see what city staff recommends adopting. Thank you.
Commissioner Canely?
I would like to, to second and third what's been said already, especially with the potential closures of 12th and Nicolet. It's very important that Portland becomes more friendly to anybody on foot or rolling.
I, I just had a question about what's been talked about, about the public safety aspect of it, because I think that's a real deterrent for some of us visiting over there now, and I think it's a growing concern for me and other people. So where are we at with that?
Commissioner Quam, this was part of the public input, or the feedback that we heard from the public. There were some safety concerns related to not just access in terms of, it's, it's difficult to walk, it's hard to cross the street, it's hard to ride my bike. It was also that people didn't feel safe walking around in certain areas. So part of that is looking at those public realm improvements, improvements to streetlighting, improvements to bringing some green space into their street trees, making it a more inviting place for more people to be, so that there are more eyes on the street. And so those are some of the things that were talked about.
This is not a public hearing, so we don't go through all those steps. This is something for us to consider recommending. So are there other comments or questions from commissioners?
So you're ready for a motion?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, I will move to recommend approval of the resolution accepting Portland Gateway Report and directing staff to consider its recommendations when considering code amendments, policy and programming, and land use applications in the Portland Gateway area.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. Okay, the ayes have it, and the motion carries. Next, we have our two public hearings, which I'm sure some of you are here for. For those of you watching who might be interested in calling in, it's the same phone number, Our first public hearing is to consider a variance request for air conditioners in the front yard areas within the Woodlake Village condominium property. Staff, could you read your report, please?
Yes, thank you. This is a variance request for air conditioners in the front yard areas of Woodlake Village condominiums. The Woodlake Village condominiums are located on the east side of Emerson Avenue and lie between 66th Street and Woodlake Park. The property is zoned Planned Multifamily Residential, PMR. The zoning code stipulates that air conditioner units shall not be located forward of the front building line. The 42-unit property has two areas that face a public street where a total of eight condos, it's two up and two down in both buildings, wouldn't be able to meet the zoning code requirement for AC locations. Four units that face Emerson Avenue, the south of 65th Street/Woodlake Lane, and then four units that face 66th Street. Both the Woodlake Village Association and a Woodlake resident are applicants for this variance request. The applicants maintain that the construction of the condo units makes it difficult to install air conditioners in their homes while meeting the zoning code requirements. One of the applicants, a resident, had installed an AC system similar to that of her neighbors, but was then notified that it violated the zoning code because it was in the front yard and adjacent to a public street. Because she is not the only resident who faces a public street, staff advised that the Woodlake Association as a whole should join the variance application so that other homeowners would not face a similar situation if they wanted to upgrade their AC systems. The Woodlake Village condos were built with wall-installed AC units, which are now outdated, drafty, and energy inefficient. Many residents who do not have public street frontage adjacent to their homes have already installed these new AC systems without violating the zoning code. The split-system AC units have been installed in the fronts of the units with utility lines that run unobtrusively into the exterior storage lockers and then into the wall unit within the owner's condo. In order to grant a variance, the commission must find that the six criteria identified in subsection 547.11 of the city code are met. A full discussion of these criteria is included in the policy section of this report. It is the opinion of staff that all criteria are met, and staff recommends approval conditioned upon the addition of plantings or decorative fence screenings for the AC units that face the public street. And staff can stand for any questions.
Thank you. We also, I believe, have some of the applicants or applicant here, in case commissioners want to direct any questions to them. But first of all, this is a public hearing, so we have to follow a certain protocol, and did the applicant, applicants wish to add anything at this time? Otherwise, we might ask you to come up to the microphone if we had a question. No? Okay. Not at this time. We haven't opened the public hearing yet, okay? All right, so commissioners, any questions based on, for the staff report? Okay, I will open the public hearing. So again, public hearing, similar to open forum, you can call in, write in, call in right now, call in ahead of time, or come up to the podium. You have up to five minutes to share. Ask you to say all, all words from the microphone, no words, you know, from the audience, because it just doesn't pick up on the microphone, and then we can hear each other. So did we have any voice messages or emails for this item, staff?
Chair Quam, we did not have any voice messages or emails.
Thank you. Staff, do we have any callers holding on the line?
Chair Quam, I do not currently have anybody on the line.
Okay, thank you. I'll check in again with you after the live testimony. The number to call in again is 612-861-0651. And you do not have to be an expert, you're just sharing your opinion. All right, are there any members of the audience who would like to share at the podium? Okay, you can just, soon as one person's leaving, just please head on up, so we're not waiting, and sign in your name and address. Say who you are and your address, and then go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Doris Rubenstein. I live at 6515 Emerson, number five. And my unit is not directly affected by this, but I would like to speak in support of my neighbors who would like to have this kind of remediation of the heat problems in our unit. Woodlake Village, I've lived there for 34 and a half years, one of the residents with the longest tenure in the community. And when they were built, there was, I didn't know what was going on as much as I do today, but there literally is no, in the units, no air movement built into it. You have to put in a ceiling fan or something like that. So there's very bad ventilation in the buildings. When I first moved in, I really didn't mind the summer heat, because summer heat wasn't what it is today, and it certainly wasn't what it is at night. And the past couple of years, and especially this past summer, were just impossible, especially at night. The, the heat, from my own place, plus that rising from the unit beneath me, and I live in an upper unit, while I enjoy having the heat rise in the winter, saves me a little bit of electricity, in the summer, it is, only makes the situation worse. I have been trying to find some way of getting my bedroom to cool off a little bit and have not been very successful. The, through-the-wall units, I've been considering putting one in, but I want to make sure that everybody who is in the same situation as I am has the opportunity to use these new, more efficient, and more powerful heat remediation systems that several of our neighbors have already put in. They are not obtrusive units. They are about the size of a large square floor fan that a lot of people have. The boxes that the utility companies have, those big green boxes with all the wires going in and out, are far more obtrusive than what these air conditioning units are like. And I think it would be a good idea, also in terms of what Richfield is trying to do, sustainability at all levels, and these new units are far more energy-efficient than those through-the-wall units, I believe. They're, they just don't get the air moving like these new ones do. And so it would be a far more efficient, energy-efficient use way to deal with this problem. So I'd like to speak strongly in favor of having this variance approved for my neighbors who live in those buildings. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Who would like to go up next? Anyone else for this item? Any callers on hold? Kelly?
Chair Quam, I do not have anybody on the line.
All right. Anyone else? Last call? Okay, so I will move to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Chair Quam, I will move to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it, and the public hearing is now closed. So no more call-ins for this item. All right, next, commissioners, do you have questions or discussion? This is our time to do that. I guess I'm going to start just by reminding people, this is a variance, which means we may, we not, we don't recommend, we decide unless it is appealed. And we have very strict criteria, we have to meet those six points. It's not a matter of if we think it's nice, or we agree, we'd like that, it's, doesn't meet the six variance criteria, which are laid out also in state statute and city code. So that's what staff went over. So I just wanted to point that out. And also, the fact that someone installs something and then finds out it wasn't okay isn't a reason for us to okay it. Just a reminder to that, to that fact. And I will pass it off to my fellow commissioners. Anyone? Any discussion on this? Questions? Okay. Yeah, Commissioner Canely?
Just reading through this report here, I'm curious if staff has any information about noise-related issues with the placement of the units.
Commissioner Canely, I did not receive any complaints. I think one of the applicants said that these split-system air conditioners are quieter. There was a air conditioning variance a few months ago, I think, and that was also an argument to approve it because it was a split system. It's usually quieter than a central air conditioning system. So yeah, I haven't, I haven't received any complaints about noise.
Thank you.
I have a question. For, how long do they have to put the plantings or screening around? That's, that's one of the conditions, right?
Chair Quam, we usually give a few weeks for people to bring violations into conformity, but we can certainly work around that timeframe if we know that this will be a condition of the variance approval. If you have a timeframe in mind, you're welcome to add that to the, the motion.
And do I understand that there will be, might be future, up to eight of these? Is that right?
Chair Quam, yes, there could be eight with public street frontages.
I guess I don't feel that, I mean, if you don't consider it, staff, that it might be an issue for how long it takes them to put the screening or plantings up, I'm okay just leaving it out. If it is an issue that's hard to enforce, then I'd like to add it as an amendment? Do you have an opinion on that?
Chair Quam, apologies. Can you repeat what you just said?
Yeah. If, if it is not normally an issue that people get these things up in a timely manner, but you know, then I don't need to add it as an amendment or argue for that. What, what is your opinion on that?
Chair Quam, we can give people a little extra time to bring any existing air conditioning, air conditioner screening into conformity.
Chair Quam, I, I would recommend adding a timeline into the resolution, just so that it's clear to everyone what that is. And with winter coming, you may want to consider giving them until spring. We also had one other thought on an added condition. Generally, a variance is granted, and it is, it's in place for one year unless the, the thing that it is granting takes place. So in this case, because you're granting it or considering granting it for an entire complex, you might want to build in additional flexibility there as well. So my recommendation there would be to perhaps add that this could happen up, in up to three years, or that, something similar, allowing people to convert over the next few years as opposed to one year from your date of approval.
All right, thank you. I think that makes sense to me. Other thoughts? We've closed the public hearing, sorry. I know, it's, it's hard to get people to go up there when it's the right time. Yeah, that happens a lot, though. So my, my feeling would be just, what we just kind of talked about, is make that motion as it's written, and then make two, I guess, two amendments, one about extending the variance for up to three years, and then also an amendment about that screening or planting should be put up within six months of installation of an air conditioner unit? Just to get a little more clarity. Any thoughts on those amendments? Commissioners Dursa?
Those amendments make sense to me. And just comments on the broader discussion, I do think that this meets, it has practical difficulties, that there's unusual or unique circumstances. I mean, I could go down the list, but it, it seems to me that all six items are met with this, so I support granting the variance with the two amendments that you suggest.
Commissioner Canely? Ditto.
Same.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Chair Quam, after a little bit of discussion here, given that we're still in the midst of a pandemic, and that people might not want anyone still coming into their home, perhaps, perhaps five years is more reasonable, allowing that additional flexibility, up to five years. Of course, that is, that's totally up to the commission, but I think that would be staff's recommendation.
I don't see any negatives for extending it. I mean, what could change? The building is still going to be there as it is. Okay, someone want to make a motion, just as, okay, does anyone want to make any motion?
I can make the motion to approve the variance request for air conditioners in front yard areas within the Woodlake Village condominium property.
Sir, a second?
Seconded.
Thank you. Discussion? I would move to amend the motion by, can I combine them? Okay. I, I will move to amend the motion by adding the modifications that in- Okay. I will, I will move to amend the motion by adding the modifications that instead of one year, applicant, residents have up to five years to put in that air conditioning unit for those special eight units. And then, in addition, that screening or plantings need to be installed within six months of installation. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment only? Can you, okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? Okay, so the amendment carries, so now we will make a motion with the amendment. So Commissioner Sturza, would you like to make that motion again with the amendment?
Yeah, I move to approve a variance request for air conditioners in front yard areas with, in the Woodlake Village condominium property with the two amendments.
Thank you. I'll second. Discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed say no? The motion carries. Okay, now we, we have a second public hearing. Just give me a moment to get that up. Thank you for coming. Okay, second public hearing, similar format. Our second public hearing is to consider a vari, wait, that's the wrong one, is to consider a request for a conditional use permit allowing a restaurant at 81766 Street East. Staff, would you read your report?
Thank you, Chair Quam. Ryan Kurzoss, Planner. Hempel Prop Companies is acquiring the property located at 81766 Street East and has submitted an application for a conditional use permit to allow a full-service restaurant within the existing structure. The property is currently zoned general commercial, or C2. Full-service restaurants, or otherwise known as Class 1 by the zoning ordinance, are listed as a conditional use in the C2 district, meaning a conditional use permit is required to establish an operation. The zoning code distinguishes a full-service restaurant from a traditional or cafeteria-style restaurant known as a Class 2, in that alcoholic beverages are able to be served in a full-service restaurant. The proposed use would include an associated ice cream shop and coffee shop with a walk-up service window. The proposal includes interior remodeling and exterior renovations to the building's facade or face, but no building additions are proposed. The application initially included a variance request to reduce the minimum number of required parking stalls. Notices were sent out and published stating as much. However, revised plans were submitted that clarify the proposed operation, such that a variance is no longer required to be considered. The parking requirement is met on the submitted floor plan, with the existed, existing stalls that will remain onsite, as well as onsite space to the rear of the building that is able to be converted to seven parking stalls. Staff is recommending a conditional approval, stating that if ongoing spillover parking is observed, then these stalls must be improved, or the owner could improve them for, as they deem necessary. It should also be noted that there is a cross-access easement between the subject property and the adjoining parcel to the west, address as 81366 Street East. Staff finds that the proposal meets the conditional use approval requirements established in Section 547.09 of the zoning ordinance. For those watching or in attendance, these standards primarily deal with whether the use is consistent with city plans and policies, and whether the use is compatible with its surroundings. If the planning commission agrees, then following a public hearing, staff recommends a positive recommendation be provided to the council for approval of the conditional use permit. With that, I'd stand for any questions, and the applicant is in attendance and can speak to any questions the commission has as well. Thank you.
Did the applicant wish to present or speak at this time? And we will open the public hearing a little bit, in a little bit. And please state your name, your address, and go ahead.
Sure. I'm Ben Kriznak. I am at 10050 Crosstown Circle. I'm with Hempel Companies, the developer of the project.
Hi, I'm Eric Forsberg. I'm at 4200 Upland Farm Road in Minatrista, 55331.
So, you might have guessed Eric, Eric the Red, and he's the food guy. So any food-related questions, he can handle. I'm more of the sticks-and-bricks real estate professional. So we just wanted to walk through the concept a little bit, show some pictures, and explain a little bit more about operation. So this is the current exterior of the building, and you know, we're planning some enhancements to it, significant facade enhancements, including a walk-up window for a coffee and ice cream location, that we think will be really neat play with the park across the street, as well as the bike route that's here. Also enhance patio with a professional, like, what do we call that?
Pergola.
Pergola, yeah, a pergola. Be a very nice look to the building. Here is the, kind of the mood, the mood sheet. So it's a Nordic-themed restaurant, so I guess lots of wood textures, some obviously, you know, white walls, bringing in some copper for some warmth as well. This is the mood window for the life, sorry, leaf. You're Swedish. So this is the mood window for, mood board for this, and kind of shows you what the coffee shop looked like. Providing, you know, baked, baked goods, obviously ice cream to hit the, more of the afternoon timeframe. Here's the overall plan.
Excuse me, could you speak up just a bit?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Is that loud enough? Yeah. As Ryan touched on, you know, there is no expansion of the patio, there's no expansion of the building. So the building footprint stays exactly how it is, and generally, layout's pretty similar. We are adding a couple restrooms to the facility, as well as the walk-up window. This is a zoomed-in version, and intend the dining room will be open for coffee shop. It kind of runs one business, but with two, I call it like a two-headed dog. You have, you know, one side and the other. So we'll go to the more pictures of what the aesthetics can look like. We plan to bring in kind of a market area as well, with locally sourced meats, cheeses, those types of products. This is the patio, more or less how it is. Adding a pergola over the top, got the word right? You know, with the patio, plan to make it dog-friendly, bring in some AstroTurf, yoga mat for your dog to sit on, food bowls, and I guess Eric can talk if we're gonna have a dog menu at all. But you want to talk a little bit about food?
Yeah, we can just be fairly brief on it. Is that loud enough? Okay. Yeah, the, I mean, the Eric the Red concept will, I mean, it is always evolving, but even in its original iteration, which was in Minneapolis, you know, we were, we were really helping build what was becoming Easttown Minneapolis. And as that part of that community was developing, it was, everything was new. So doing similar to what we're hoping to accomplish here is to really create a neighborhood restaurant. The idea behind the experiences and most of our concepts are to, you know, to customize and cater the concept to the community that we're in. This is a neighborhood restaurant. This is, you know, this is not to be mistaken for a, a bar or something. Sometimes people have that misconception with Eric the Red, in that we were across the street from the stadium. Sure, on game days, it was a, definitely a busy bar, but on the other, you know, 345 days out of the year, we were a neighborhood and family restaurant. And that's what this space intends to be. So a lot of what our menu is built around is it is, it is a, it's a craft kitchen. So we have always, most of my concepts have always come through working with either a scratch kitchen or a craft kitchen, in that we're doing intelligent sourcing. The idea behind the concept, when we say Nordic, isn't necessarily this, you know, stuffy, ludicrous, maybe, idea. It's, it's really created more out of what comes from, it's, it's an ideology called the Nordic Manifesto, which is built around sustainability, really locally sourcing, and creating a better quality product, which is something we try to bring to our communities as well. So that concept and that idea, as it plays into Eric the Red, is really what builds the foundation for what we create. So I guess I can answer any questions on food.
I'm gonna address the elephant in the room tonight for this. Eric doesn't do this a lot. He asked me what he should wear, and when I told him what I was wearing, I didn't mean for him to wear exactly, but.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I guess, you know, one thing that we see in this, this market that we'd like to, to continue to add is, you know, this brunch component too, and having that be, I think you said that was probably your busiest.
It was.
You know, business, and maybe you can talk a little bit about menu items for that.
Yeah, well, I mean, let's take the word Danish for a minute, right? So, and I think that's the piece of Leaf, but we really want to separate Leaf from Eric the Red, where Eric the Red really is the full-service restaurant element of this, which is, you know, is bringing in the, you know, the cured meats and the, and the, you know, that heavier piece of it, whereas Leaf is really built for that, that grab-and-go, the, you know, the coffee element, the cremeery with, with our ice cream, but also in the pastries. And, you know, we're trying to take, you know, when we've looked, and I'm sure that some of you have seen, like, you know, where we've tried to identify, this concept is like, this community is, is just spot-on for what we're trying to, to, to get to. Where we really feel the need is there for, for that, that coffee shop element, the, the fresh pastries, it really elevate something that is here, because your, your community, which is, which is, is growing rapidly, is also really fitting with, with who we are. We really feel like we'll tie into it well. And that ties into our brunch program, our early morning program, our coffee program, all locally and, and sustainably sourced.
And Eric's involved with some sustainable, partner in some farming operations and that kind of thing. So he has a very good grasp, you know, agriculture and, and where these products come from. Yeah, I don't know if we, I think we should maybe take some questions. Sorry, we didn't talk enough.
Yeah, so commissioners, now if you have any questions for the applicants or staff, go ahead. If you have any questions for the applicants or the staff, and we might have questions as we go. I have one question, since you brought it up. One of the requirements is, there's a public need for such use at the proposed location. This requirement is met, which is also directed to you, if necessary, but why is there a public need for this, at this proposed location, in your opinion?
Well, I think, I think that your community is evolving. And from what I've seen from many of the, much of the entertainment that is available in, in the form of what I do for a living, which is, you know, culinary, I think the community is, is elevating some of that experience for Richfield, and helping play into, you know, who, the roots of what Richfield is, and the direction that, that they're going. That's where I think we're going to meet in the middle.
Thank you. Staff, do you have anything to add for that?
Thank you, Chair Quam. Yeah, I'd just add, during our planning processes that we, we go through throughout, you know, the planning cycles, we often hear that residents want local restaurants in the community, and the fact that the zoning code specifically allows for restaurants, full-service restaurants in C2 district is suggestive of the fact that there's a need and a desire for, for this type of use.
Thank you. All right, well, we'll open up our public hearing, and then we can always ask more questions as we go. I like to get some of the questions out, so that people that are in the public hearing have a chance to chime in, like, just happened. So, but let's open the public hearing, and did we have any in advance voice messages or emails? City Planner Kurzoss?
Chair Quam, the planning commission should have received emails from Lisa Ann Gorsh, Katie, excuse me, sorry, Katie Schmidt, and one letter from Patricia Ryman and Nancy Lindell. But we did not receive any other phone calls, or, or any other comment phone calls. There's a few that asked questions, but didn't relay a comment one way or the other.
Are you comfortable summarizing what they were? Were they all in sync with each other, kind of? They were against it, or?
Actually, there's one call, sorry about that. And the questions were relating to whether this would, this is associated with any changes to on-street parking requirements, which is, that's not the case.
Any other questions? All right, so we opened the public hearing, no, no, the, the emails that he referenced in one call. So next, do we have any callers on hold? 612-861-0651. Kelly, do we currently have any callers?
Chair Quam, I do not have anybody on the line.
Okay, thanks. Is there anyone in the, and we'll, we'll go back to callers, you still can call in. Anyone in the audience who'd like to share at this open, at this public hearing on this issue? We'd love to hear from you. Go ahead. Please start with your name and address, and then sign in.
My name is Lisa Gorchy. I live at 6615 Elliot Avenue South, which is directly across the street of the proposed restaurant. Or as they've described it, two restaurants now. I have brought with me, since they did not obtain any signatures in support of theirs, I did go through the neighborhood of those that are in the 350-square-foot affected area, and I have brought the petition of all of those in opposition to the proposed restaurant with me for your use. That includes 13 households, single-family, within the affected area, as well as four apartment dwellers who are directly across the street, but I consider them, and many in the apartments, long-term residents, because many of those residents in the apartments have lived here five-plus years. There are nine residents that I was unable to contact within that area. They did not decline. Some of those families I had spoken to previously, they just weren't available to sign off on my petition that I brought around through to the area. In this instance, the planning commission is being presented, not with a similar business for placement at 816, or 81766 Street, it's a proposed restaurant, which is a full-service restaurant with an added coffee shop. The proposed hours are substantially different from our current neighborhood hours, where most of the businesses, including local roots, are closed by 9:00 p.m. The proposed restaurant, well, the coffee shop would open at 7:00 a.m. The proposed restaurant is noted to be open till midnight, in a family-friendly neighborhood that has young children and babies in it. Their proposed seating is for 95 people in the interior, 17 of which is designated for the bar, but it's not a bar, as the proposed hempel is saying. In addition, it has, let's see, 62 interior and 32 exterior. They estimate there'll, there will be 50-plus employees, which is awesome. I hope they find 50-plus employees that are interested in working in a restaurant, especially in our day and age, because I understand the difficulties with small businesses and hiring people right now. The menu is substantially different than the existing restaurant. The current business is a simple restaurant, with a focus also on locally sourced items. The predominance of their business is on weekends, during their breakfast and lunch hours, and what I like to refer to as the early bird specials. They, as I stated, the new business would have substantially later hours. The size of the business is one and a half times the seating of local roots. I've counted the chairs in local roots, inside and outside. They may not be making the footprint of the building bigger, but they are going to maximize the number of people who can sit in the building. Thus, parking, though the variance, because there are less people going to the restaurant, will be accepted, and so they don't need to provide for more parking. That means more people will be parking on the city streets, if they're going to maximize their business and be a full-service restaurant. Which means people who come home from their apartments may not be able to park conveniently in front of their house. Residents who have, happen to. Residents who have happened to park on the street will not be afforded that luxury either because of the restaurant. Additionally, where are their employees going to be forced to park? If they tell their employees to park on the street, they will be taking up and using the roadways. If you are in that neighborhood at all, you will already notice it is a raceway, and we are only, what, six, seven blocks away from two of our elementary schools, and they raced down that street. We have significant business already that is happening there, and it's appropriate for the neighborhood. Additionally, the variance or the easement to next door to my taco could negatively impact their business and their parking by the additional traffic. I don't want, this is a case of, I don't want it in my neighborhood. I don't want another Pizza Luce-type place in my neighborhood. It is not conducive to a family neighborhood. The increased foot traffic is also a concern. We have no sidewalks on the side streets. Our neighborhood walks to the park. People walk from blocks and down by the STEM School, down Elliot and Chicago to enter Veterans Park. The additional traffic of these customers would impact their enjoyment to safely get to the park as they walked down the city street, which is not being taken into consideration. I would ask that this Planning Board take into consideration the neighborhood immediately surrounding it that does not want them there, who they did not reach out to, although they had the option to reach out to everyone in the neighborhood. They did not, they chose not to, because they knew they were not like the neighborhood. Maybe when you're coming to consider Richfield 2050 or 2060, it might be tenable that they are in the neighborhood.
Excuse me, you have about 20 seconds left of your five minutes if you want to wrap up.
I will wrap up. But I do not believe that they fit within the neighborhood, and I would respectfully request that you not approve their conditional use permit.
Thank you. Is there any way to get to, can we see the other neighbors' comments that you brought in?
I would, yes, I can bring it up.
What's the protocol? Can she just hand them to us, or?
Chair Quam, she can leave the petition there, and it will be included as part of the record.
Okay, thank you.
I will leave it right there.
Thank you for your feedback. Anyone else for the public hearing for this item? Kelly, do we have any callers on hold?
Chair Quam, I do not have anybody on the line.
All right, thank you. So, last call for public hearing. Okay, would someone like to move to close the public hearing?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The public hearing is closed. Did staff want to reply to anything? There weren't specific questions in there, but was there anything you choose to respond to from what we heard, or?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So now, we will have Commissioner discussion, further questions for the applicant or staff. We can discuss anything at this point. Commissioner Keneely?
Is it possible to have the applicant respond to any of the comments?
Could you come back to the podium for a question? Thank you.
Hi, welcome back. So, I guess, are there any questions, or?
Yeah, Commissioner Keneely has a question for you.
Oh, okay.
I'm, thank you for coming back up. I am curious if you have any comments in response to what we've listened to.
I think the way we look at this is we intend to be part of the community and, you know, have menu items that are both exploratory, but also many that are also very recognizable, like, there is a cheeseburger on the menu. I mean, there are things that people will definitely will recognize, and I think our goal is to look at, you know, the area in that immediate area and have people that walk, have people that bike the transit corridor, I think I mentioned the park being a big draw, and there's, you know, events that happen over there where there will be plenty of customers that can walk across the street. So, we're not concerned about parking at all. The LEAF concept is a grab-and-go concept, and so that part will carry quickly, you know, where it won't be tying up stalls for a long period of time. I think the easement was brought up between the two properties, and, you know, they, we strive to be good neighbors. They bought their property subject to that easement, were subject to the same easement, so they can cross over our parcels, so, I mean, that's how easements work. They are used, and you are subject to that, but, said, our goal is to be a good neighbor and continually refine the concept to fit in, fit into the neighborhood. You know, will we nail every single menu item from day one? I'm sure, I'm sure Eric might, but, you know, things will get pulled off and refined as need be, so.
Commissioner Rosenberg? Excuse me, did you have more, Commissioner Keneely? I'm sorry. Did you get your questions answered? Yeah, Commissioner Rosenberg.
Yeah, I just wondered, did you ever have any conversations with anybody in the neighborhood, or, because this is going to be a change in venue for the place?
I think the signatures required for variance, not for a conditional use permit. You know, I think we're, you know, we're very open to conversations, and, yeah, I mean, I was telling Eric, you know, we met before this, I said, you know, what I like about Planning Commission is, we actually do get some really good ideas sometimes from, and Eric doesn't do that a lot.
Sometimes a little door knocking really helps and kind of gets you some relationships built and trying to do some conversation and discussion and kind of explain what's going on there. Maybe that would have kind of eased some of this neighborhood issues that's seemingly going on right now. So, you know, this, you know, if you were granted this, that would probably be a really good thing to kind of get acquainted in there.
Yep, yeah, we absolutely want to be.
Because this is so different than what is in there now, and it's going to take some adjustment period and to get acquainted with the neighborhood. I mean, we're talking two blocks, probably three blocks, not much.
Other questions for the applicant at this time? Okay, you can have a seat, thank you. Questions for staff, Commissioners? I don't have any other questions. I'm most concerned about the hour of midnight for full-service bar in that area. So, we're talking about a conditional use permit, and so I see that, but, number six of that, the use will not have undue adverse impacts on the public health, safety, or welfare of the surrounding area, and it says adequate provisions have been made to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, but I'm concerned about the, yeah, that, that kind of, full-service bar going until midnight, what about earlier? Commissioner Kurzus?
Chair Quam, I have heard of conditions related to hours of operations. Richfield does not have a history of doing that with any of the Class I restaurants that I was able to come across, and I looked through as many as I could find, so, it's not traditionally been done, however, I would.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part of what you said, sorry.
I believe it would be within your, within your power to restrict or do anything you deem necessary to meet that finding as the city. So, but again, there's not a past practice that the city has done with other.
I see, yeah, that's clear, thank you. Melissa, staff?
Chair Quam, members of the commission, I did also want to remind you that the applicant would need to apply for a liquor license, and that there are rules and regulations for how you manage your business that are related to that license. And generally, those, the, I don't, punishment is not the word I'm looking for, the punishment that you are given for violating the rules of your liquor license are generally a lot stronger than going, trying to go through a conditional use permit process. If there are problems in the neighborhood, there are noise ordinances, there are those rules regarding the liquor license and your operation, and the city of Richfield takes those very seriously. Our Public Safety Department has reviewed this application and did not bring up any immediate safety concerns. That said, Ryan is exactly right, it is within your power to restrict or recommend that the council restrict the hours.
Thank you. With the conditional use permit, I mean, in theory, couldn't they be granted a, Planner Kurzus, couldn't they be planted, granted a conditional use permit to serve alcohol until 10:00, and then reapply to extend it after so much time based on outcome? I guess I'm uncomfortable with the midnight hour of alcohol in that kind of neighborhood, and so maybe it could be extended. If 10:00 is working, then they could come back and ask for 12:00, or?
I guess I would struggle with what's the standard by which it's successful versus not successful. Again, as Melissa mentioned, there would be more weight with the liquor license requirements and that process, but, you know, certainly you could look at, as we mentioned, restricting hours of operation, and then a change would be an amendment down the road potentially.
Any thoughts from Commissioners about what I was saying about earlier alcohol stopping? Commissioner Rosenberg?
Yeah, I, just a quick question for staff. So, they have fulfilled, I mean, the parking requirements, that seems to be the issue right here, is where, you know, the overflow parking and all that. They have fulfilled the requirements of the site, fulfills the requirement, the policies of parking for every, for a restaurant of this size. So, I mean, including those seven along the back that you talk about that are not improved. If the parking gets to be too heavy, then those parking spots would have to be improved so that they could be utilized better.
Correct.
Okay, okay.
I think what Chair Quam's concern is, is there are standards beyond just the, does it meet the dimensional requirements and parking requirements? Does it meet those standards of approval that are a little bit more nebulous in terms of, is it consistent with surrounding land uses, which generally we find that it is? I mean, this is kind of one of the busier thoroughfares, that the code is set up to allow these specific uses along arterials and collectors, and 66 is a major thoroughfare, so, this is, that, there's logic behind that, so, but Chair Quam is looking to see if it, if the hours of operation impact that ability to make a finding that it's, doesn't negatively affect adjoining properties.
So, the, you know, the restaurant that's alongside, or whatever the business is alongside of Local Roots, that is, that's still there now, or has that gone? It's still there? So, they would have, they're leaving too, then, so, so there would be another business that would be?
I'm sorry, by?
They're not?
By next door?
So, that's just, oh, they're just going to be in a local, maybe I?
Correct, yeah. Are you thinking of the grocery store with a restaurant component?
Yeah, yeah.
That's, that's.
That's going to stay there?
Yeah.
Okay, so then there's issues with, okay, for some reason I was thinking they were, it was the whole building, okay, all right, got it.
I just wanted to clarify, I do not have an issue with the parking, they meet the parking requirement, so I have no, nebulous or not, I'm fine with that, they met the requirement, so that's not for me to consider. But I wanted to know other thought, yeah. Commissioner Sturza?
Thank you. I guess I'm reviewing the eight requirements and conditions of the conditional use permit, and I really feel like the requirements are met. I feel comfortable with midnight hours. I feel like a liquor license contains a lot of requirements. Our city, I trust that our city police department will be able to enforce those requirements. I feel like this is something our community, these restaurants are something that I hear from my neighbors that we want more options, that seems to, I think it would appeal to a lot of my neighbors, even though that's irrelevant to our consideration here. I just, I don't have concerns about them being open until midnight.
Commissioner Keneely?
I would like to second Commissioner, or I'm sorry, yeah, Commissioner Sturza's comments, excuse me. I had a few questions for clarity. Local Roots does serve alcohol now, is that correct?
It's my understanding that that does, they do serve alcohol. They were granted an alcohol-serving license. It appears that they missed the step of getting the zoning approval to do so. The only zoning approval on record is just for the Class II, the class cafe, or the traditional restaurant.
Yeah, without a precedent of limiting when restaurants and bars can serve alcohol, I'm not in favor of starting doing that. You know, I like same rules applying to same businesses. We've also received comments from the current owners of the building that the financial future of the existing restaurant is not certain, and I don't want to see an empty storefront there. So, just in general, I believe that they're meeting the requirements here, and I don't want to add any additional.
Other thoughts, or Commissioner Sturza?
I did mean to add, as much as I support the conditional use permit, I do think that we have a tradition of being good neighbors in Richfield, and I would strongly recommend the, like, there's no requirements to it, but I do think that some door knocking, some chatting, trying to build those relationships is really keeping in character with Richfield, and I would strongly encourage that.
My thought on that is, once the deal is signed, it's a lot harder to get motivated to door knock. So, I wish people would do that in advance rather than after the fact, when you're busy making your plans, but, yeah, that is kind of our, been our way, is whether it's required or not, was for new applicants to get the consensus with their finger in the wind, but I don't know that that will happen after the fact, hopefully, but we'll never know. But I understand that, I understand I don't have support on limiting the alcohol hours. I'm still going to propose it as an amendment to 11:00, just because I, I think it's, it would be nice for that area, and we do have that power. We're, staff said we do have the power to do that, even if it hasn't been done. Yeah, Commissioner Sturza?
I would just, and sorry for interrupting, but I would just state that relationships are ongoing, that even within approval, we're all building relationships day to day, and to write off the idea that they don't need to build the relationships because they already have approvals, I think every, it serves everyone, it's in everyone's best interest if the neighbors and the business owners can get along in that space, so, I'd still encourage it, but, that's what's up.
Good. I encourage it, too. All right, other discussion or questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Okay, I will make a motion to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow a Class I restaurant at 81766 Street East.
Second?
Seconded.
I move to amend the motion to restrict sale of alcohol so that it would stop at 11:00 p.m. Second? Okay, there's a second, yeah, thank you. All right, any discussion on that, other than what we've had? Okay. Okay, all in favor of the amendment restricting it to eleven P.M.? Say aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? So we are tied, which means we do not have a majority, so the amendment fails, okay? So now we have the, any other discussion or amendments on the original? So we're back to just the original?
I, I'm not hearing what you want, Catherine.
So the amendment fails, we, we voted two-two, so we don't have fifty-one percent. So, there's no restriction on the serving of alcohol.
So you want me to re, re?
No, I'm just asking if we have more discussion on the original amendment?
Oh.
Or other amend, I mean, the original motion or other amendments?
Anyone? All right, so who made the original?
I did.
Okay, could you repeat it, just?
Sure, I will move to recommend approval of a conditional use permit to allow a Class One restaurant at eight seventeen sixty-sixth Street East.
Thank you, and we already had a second, I just wanted to hear it again, thanks. So all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say no? The ayes have it, and the motion is carried, congratulations. All right, that's, ends that public hearing, so next we come to, thank you for coming, everyone, and your participation, appreciate it. Next we have liaison reports. I'm just going to call the commissions that are here, community cer, uh, he's not here either. City Council? Any report? Okay. Housing and redevelopment authority?
That's me. The H.R.A. reviewed a grant, or, I guess they supported a resolution for a grant application for woodland terraced, or manufactured home community, that they would have their, some infrastructure improvements. They, the H.R.A. supported a resolution to support that grant application. And they also considered a preliminary donation agreement for the donation of the building at sixteen hundred seventy-eighth Street East over by four ninety-four and seventy-seven. There's a land donation, which I guess is pretty unique for the city.
Is that the end of your report?
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
All right, and finally, Transportation Commission?
The Transportation Commission met August eleventh and discussed an engineering study on safer us to school, discussed the seventy-seventh underpass that's under construction, plans for mill and overlay, the Bus Rapid Transit Project, and a list of other items. They only had the agenda posted, not the minutes, that is what they discussed.
All right, thank you. That's the end of our reports for tonight. Next we have city planners' reports, staff?
Thank you, Chair Quam. On October twenty-fifth, we will have a work session with the city council and planning commission and H.R.A. to further our work on the missing middle housing. As you recall, we had a work session in March, and we will be presenting what we've been working on since that time and get additional directions to move that work forward. Moving on to link sixty-five, they submitted a building permit application this week, or, excuse me, end of last week. So looking forward to reviewing that and, and a groundbreaking following that permit letting. And then Novo was issued a certificate of occupancy pretty recently, so those units are coming online, and we're excited about that. So, I probably should have mentioned this earlier, but October twelfth will be the day for the council meeting's consideration of the conditional use permit that was heard tonight. So I apologize for not mentioning that when more people were listening, so. That's all I had.
Thank you. All right, thanks, everyone who's still here or listening for your participation. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll second, any discussion on adjourning? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say no? All right, then the, the meeting is adjourned, good night.